It is 5:36. It's my special pleasure to call a special Lubbock City Council meeting to order today. We are convening in work session in the chambers to consider items one and one-one on our agenda for tonight. Now, this is a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and members of the Planning, Zoning, and Zoning Commission, like council members, may participate in the discussion. Mr. Jackson?
My name's Mike Jackson. I'm the chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission, and we'd like to call our meeting simultaneously to order as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for meeting tonight. Tonight is a very important first step. This is the kickoff as we get ready to move forward with the Unified Development Code. Of course, this project is one of the priority implementation items in the Plan Lubbock 2040 that Planning and Zoning approved late last fall, City Commission, City Council, excuse me, adopted in December. Introduce three of our partners that are here tonight. David Baird, Brian Mayberry, one on each side. The gentlemen are with Kendig Keast Collaborative, and also Mr. Mark White, who is a partner with the firm of White &amp; Smith. They are going to be here tonight to walk us through. Ms. Kristin Sager will do the lead-in, and thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Good evening, Ms. Sager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission.
We wouldn't know what to do with you if you didn't have slides.
(laughing) I am so excited to be here tonight. As Mr. Atkinson mentioned, this was one of the list of future tasks that the Comp Plan directed staff to implement. It is one of the most important because we are going to update the zoning regulations and subdivision regulations, which are tools that we use to implement our planning policy. In May of 2019, the city hired Kendig Keast Collaborative to create this Unified Development Code to combine all the land use and development regulations and standards into a single cohesive and comprehensive document. The development of the Unified Development Code is expected to take about 22 months. The consultant team has been on-site with us throughout the day today, and we've already had some great input from some of our boards and commissions. So I am pleased to introduce David Baird.
Thank you, Kristin. Welcome, Mr. Baird.
It's good to be here. I was here for the approval meeting as well, so I see some familiar faces. But yeah, as Kristin said, we're just starting off this process. Is there a clicker for the slides? Or is it right here? Okay. So one of the questions that was presented to us during the actual approval meeting was what cities in the state of Texas also have a unified code? So we wanted to kind of update you guys on that. We were able to mention a few, but you see there are a lot of different cities that have moved towards this. The larger cities in the state, Austin, Dallas, Corpus Christi, which is a client of Kendig Keast Collaborative's, and you can see some other ones that are on the board right there. San Antonio, which is one that Mark White actually helped craft in a consultant role. So there are a lot of cities that have moved to it. There are a lot of benefits, a lot of reasons to do that. We'll get into a few of those a little bit later. But really, the primary project goals, your city manager mentioned the Comprehensive Plan, so I really want to touch on that, is anything that came out of the Comprehensive Plan that is a specific policy, what we really want to do is implement that. So we want to move from a planning standpoint into actual regulation. So that's one thing that's important in this process is this is not just a plan. It's actually what's going to be law on the ground. So the other couple things, my colleague, Brian Mayberry, is going to talk in more detail about this, but really, our first step in this is not to actually start writing. Our first step is to analyze what the existing conditions are, what the existing ordinances are, and we do that through something we refer to as a code critique. Now, in the RFQ that we responded to, there were certain sections of that, and Brian, like I said, is going to go into more detail. But that's going to be our key thing for the next trip that we're going to be on, is working on this. And so we're going to be looking at it from a very technical standpoint, and then after we've done that, we'll have the stakeholder meetings, and we'll be able to see kind of the feedback that we're getting from the community. Now, we've also already started with the feedback with some of the boards and commissions.
Mr. Baird, I'm going to interrupt you for one minute. Council, each of you have, it's your place, a place for you to turn in a list of three names that you would like to be part of these focus groups when our folks come back in late September or early October. In addition to this, there will be stakeholders, realtors, builders, I mean, there's some stakeholders groups, and I know they're going to talk a bit about that, but that's as important that we get this information.
Absolutely, and I want to speak a little bit, since you brought that up, Mayor, on how we do the stakeholder groups?
One more thing.
Yeah.
I didn't recognize, we have a number of citizens here.
Yeah.
We're glad you're here tonight. This will not be a meeting where we're making decisions. Really, it's a big briefing. In fact, we're going to, I'm going to attempt to keep us out of the weeds because that's not what this is about. It's about the people that we have engaged that are going to work with our staff, with our citizens, with P&amp;Z, who will be the, sort of, the report will come to P&amp;Z before it comes to us. You guys will be the ones that will work with them, but they're going to, you're going to lay out the plan, tell them what you're going to do, sort of those road, you know, the
Road map.
Road map of the situation, the little triggers, the different points that we'll see things from you guys.
Exactly.
And then we'll follow through with that. We're not going to get in tonight to talking about non-conforming uses and
Right.
How we solve problems in an area that we change, you know, we change zoning. So I want to make sure that we
Yeah.
And if we go down that road, I'm going to bring us back on track because this council was, we spent seven hours on Tuesday, we're going to spend 10 hours early next week on budget. We don't plan on being here all night tonight, okay?
Yeah, I think it's important, what we refer to as issue identification, something that is a problem, we're not going to solve the problem tonight, but I'm going to speak about, a little bit about how we spoke with the boards and commissions and about the problems that they've told us. So yeah, we're not, we're not going to get into the, you're exactly right, Mayor. I think if there is an issue, we need to be aware of the issue, but like I said, it's a 22-month process, you know? Tonight is not about, here's what the answer's going to be. It's more about understanding what the issues and the problems are. So with that, I did want to also mention, Mayor, you brought up the stakeholder sessions, and a little bit of feedback for the form that you have that'll help. The way we do these stakeholder sessions is they're divided into groups that view the code similarly. So like, you'll have realtors and brokers, you'll have your development community, you'll have like your neighborhood advocates, and we've gone through and figured out what those six groups are going to be. And so it's important that we do it that way because what we're looking for is common themes and common consensus that that group can view it. So it's, sometimes I've had councils in the past that see that as, you know, well, it'd be more convenient if I go, if my person goes at the two o'clock slot or the three o'clock slot. We really want to have the same mindset in each individual group. So any questions on that, how that works? Okay. So kind of going back to the Comp Plan, these are three things in the Comp Plan specifically that were mentioned as reasons to do the Unified Development Code, and I think they're very true, is, you know, it's the best way to implement your planning and your engineering goals. Streamlining is, it's a huge buzzword, I know, but it's really, makes it so much user-friendly from an applicant's standpoint because when there's like 18 different ordinances, they don't even know where to start. So when it's all together, it makes it so much easier for them. So with that, I wanted to mention, this is our scope, what sections of the code we are actually going to be consolidating. You can see zoning, subdivisions, some of the historic, the different central business district areas that you have. But also, there are guidelines that you currently have, and so it's going to be important that we go through this and look to see, there's some things in the guidelines that maybe they should actually be standards in the code. So this was a big issue today with your Urban Design and Historic Preservation Group, and they had some real concerns about enforcement. And what I did is I actually said, okay, now I'm going to throw these sections up on the screen, are the problems that you're having worse with these sections? And the answer was absolutely yes. So a lot of times, it's hard for the legal department, when it's a guideline, not in the code, how is that getting enforced? So we're going to be thinking through all of that, and if it's something that really needs to be a standard, then we're going to recommend that it go into the city code. So we are at the front of this process. We talked about the Comp Plan, and your city manager mentioned how this was, this process came out of that, but we really are at the front of the trip, first trip for this Unified Development Code. We like to think of this as kind of a funnel analogy, is that we're starting out broad, we're just figuring out what the issues are right now, and then we're moving towards the bottom, which is finally adoption after that 22-month period. Now, you can see some of the other steps in the process. One thing I wanted to point out in this is when it says ordinance modules, I'd just like to say that's a big word for a section of the code. This is such a large process that we really, to write it completely and then give it over to a city would just be very difficult to consume. So we break it up into sections to make it easier to digest. One thing I will mention on that is when you start getting that to review, a lot of, lot of the first question I get, and Brian and Mark will get, is, well, what happened with such and such? You must have forgotten it. Like, no, 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 we didn't forget it, it's just coming in the later modules. So I put that out there just to warn you because that is, you know, we really have to break it apart, but because it's reorganized, it's not that we've left it out, it's that it's just coming in the future, basically. So just a little bit more about how this is going to work in the drafting. We're going to be taking the first draft. Of course, the code critique comes first, so we're not writing any of the code previous to the next trip at all. We're just doing the study portion. And then we're going to do the modules, and then it'll go to city staff review first, and then it's going to come to this group with, most likely it'd be nice to have a joint meeting together. I feel like that process works real well with communities. And then the public review, and then finally, the final revised draft. So for right now, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Mayberry, and he's going to talk a little bit more about the code critique.
Good evening, council members and commissioners. Brian Mayberry, Kendig Keast Collaborative. So first, the next three slides or so are about the code critique that David mentioned. It kind of consists of three parts, the first being a community character analysis. This is something that you all, that was requested in the RFP to do this project. So it's something that is important to everyone. And so what I mean by community character analysis is we will be tomorrow especially touring the city with city staff by vehicle, and even, we walked around some today in the downtown area, taking a lot of pictures, really examining what makes Lubbock Lubbock and what its unique DNA is, quote unquote, to, in order to be able to provide you a code that kind of takes in some of those unique aspects and allows them to be replicated in new developments. Not necessarily to a T, but that brings elements that are familiar with people who live here in Lubbock and makes them parts of new developments or redevelopments or infill development of, you know, vacant lots that might be in between already developed areas. So we'll be, again, looking at aerials, aerial photos online, your zoning map, looking at the photos we've taken while we're touring the city, all these kinds of things, and seeing, you know, what a typical setback is, or building height for a neighborhood that, you know, we'll kind of maybe sample different neighborhoods and see how that works, both with residential uses, mixed uses, commercial, office, retail, industrial, all of those kinds of things, to get, kind of really lay the groundwork for what your new zoning districts are going to look like. And a lot of them might be a lot like what you already have, but there will also, you know, there's bound to be some revised districts or combined zoning districts that you would have in your, in the drafts that you're reviewing. And I want to emphasize that drafts are exactly that, drafts. They are nothing set in stone when we're presenting these modules to you in the future. It's not set in stone really until the council adopts it, you know, after 22 months. And even then, it's always amendable, but I just wanted to make sure that was understood. So as we're looking at the zoning map and the aerial photos and everything, we'll be analyzing how what's on the ground and kind of interacts with the districts that are on your map. Following that up is kind of the real work on the critique itself. We'll be talking about some of the basics of planning, zoning, and plating or subdivision work, because a lot of times, we unfortunately assume as planning professionals that the public understands those things, but we want to try to make sure that that's really clear and out in the open. We'll be looking at how your regulations align with kind of bigger picture legal issues like the U.S. Constitution and state statutes, and there's a couple of new things that have come down the pipe very, very recently from the state legislature that we'll have to definitely consider. We will be looking at how your existing regulations implement the policies of your new plan. That's one of the biggest jobs of a code, is to put into regulatory form the bigger policies that are in your comprehensive plan. So we'll be seeing how they, how your current regs stack up against your, the policies in your plan. Looking at streamlining, David mentioned that a moment ago, and how to, when possible, cut out the need for a variance in the first place. I mean, that's not something that either of you see, but the Board of Zoning Adjustment, excuse me, sees variances, you know, all the time, and often have a long agenda. And so if we can write things into the code that will remove the need for those variances while at the same time protecting the public interest, then that's a win-win for most people. We'll be looking at best practices around the country that we've, as a firm, have learned about and experienced and created over the past 35 years that we've been in existence, seeing how what you have now compares to kind of national best practices. Talking about different flavors or types of zoning that exist, composite zoning, form-based zoning, conventional or Euclidean zoning, all those things will be explained, and you'll become more familiar with those as this project goes on. And then finally, one kind of unique thing for Lubbock that we'll be paying a lot of attention to is non-conforming uses and structures, and how we can best handle those in the future in your new code. My final piece to talk about for the critique is to talk about the annotated outline. That is a kind of a table of contents, a master table of contents for what your, for how your new code will look. And it'll be similar to what you see on the screen, where half of the page will be a column of the kind of new structure of the code on the left side in this example, and the right side is your existing provisions and how they kind of fit in there. Excuse me again. That's not to say that your existing, all your existing regulations are going to be carried over and stay that way. We're not just reshuffling things around. We'll be changing, you know, significantly changing a lot of your regulations with, after they've been, you know, vetted through staff and through the, through you all before they're finally adopted, of course. And some of your regulations that are working well will stay the same and be right in there, you know, as they are already, as they're already written, and some will be modified a little bit. So I think we're kind of of the approach of if it's not broke, don't fix it, but we want to find out what is broken and try to help you fix it.
So I wanted to give you, every time that I'm here, I'm going to be summarizing some of what we've heard from the different groups that we've met, and some of the key points that I've noticed, and then if you have any feedback or about that, you know, feel free to respond to this. But like we mentioned, the boards and commission meetings that we had today, I wanted to talk about the different groups. We had them in two different groups. The first meeting was the first three that you see up there, is the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the Urban Design, Historic Preservation, and the Airport Advisory Board. We grouped those together because they're more of a regulatory viewpoint on things. And so I actually already mentioned the key topics from the Urban Design and Historic Preservation was this issue of things in the guidelines, can they be enforced? What's the legality of that, and do we need to shift those into standards? That was critical for the people that were there from that board. The Zoning Board of Adjustments, I've noticed, we've done, I've done, at KKC, done a lot of work here in the, in this area of West Texas, the Texas Panhandle, and throughout, carports is such a big issue that goes to the Zoning Board of Adjustments. You know, we're working with Amarillo, and I've worked in Plainview, and it's the same thing. That's the biggest thing that comes before the Zoning Board of Adjustment. So we heard a lot about that. We also heard about accessory buildings and issues relating to that. So those are going to be some of the key topics that we're really going to delve into and think about, how can we handle this in the code critique? And then we'll be able to draft that and give you guys to where you can give input and then modifications. The Airport Advisory Board, you have what's referred to as an airport overlay that is there for federal aviation protection reasons. There is one section of the code that goes into land use restrictions that is above what the FAA does, but right now, it's very vague. By that, it basically says, we want land uses that are compatible. It's very difficult for me, when I read that, to know what that means, you know? So what we talked with them about and what they're, and I've talked with Kelly Campbell at the airport about, is taking that section and looking at and figuring out, what are we going to permit there and what are we not going to permit? Because it's, really, the language today is so open to interpretation that it leads. So when the language is that open to interpretation, there are just so many problems, both from a legal and a policy standpoint, and I'm sure you guys have seen what can, what can happen through that. So then the second meeting was more of your Community Development, your Economic Development Group, and we, the Community Development and Services Board and the Urban Renewal Neighborhood Redevelopment Commission, really, both of those groups had a very similar message, which is through this process, you need to have outreach in the North Lubbock and East Lubbock areas. So what we're going to do for that is we've set aside what we've been calling open door meetings. Instead of some of those open doors meetings just being here at City Council, we want to work and find, we're going to work with staff to find appropriate community centers to where those meetings can actually be there, and we can more directly engage with the neighborhood associations. So that's something that is going to be important for this. Finally, the Economic Development Alliance, they brought up some concerns about parking and setbacks in the downtown, some things that we don't typically see as heavily regulated in a downtown. So we're going to look into that and see what we can, we can handle with that. So with that, I just want to briefly go through the project schedule and kind of, you know, we're here today on the 25th and the 26th. We're going to, it's very iterative, as I mentioned, with going through these modules. So we've set weeks where the code critique's going to be due, when presentations, the presentation for the code critique, and then staff will get a chance to review that before we're actually here. But we have set in stone the second trip, which is going to be Monday, September 30th through Thursday, October 3rd. One of the big parts of that one is going to be a downtown public charrette. That's going to be done with one of our subconsultants that's not here tonight, Dover Cole. But there's going to be a lot, a lot of opportunities for public engagement at the next trip, and it's going to be a very long trip. So we're going to be working with staff to get the right people in the room and make sure that we're going to have some, what I hope to be pretty high turnout with those. So then we, just to let you know, we have laid out the schedule all the way through the adoption date. Again, in these four modules, it's very iterative. It's very similar from what, on a schedule format, you'd see module one, then module two, then module three. And it's set up so that we can be drafting on the next module while they're reviewing or you're reviewing, so there's constant workflow. I'm just going to flip through that very, so you can see, but the final adopted date of March 2021. So finally, I want to mention that the city has dedicated a webpage section for this, so for the members of the public that are here tonight who want to keep up with this process, this is the best place for you to go. So I'm sure we would have this link available in the future. So actually, I believe, right after this meeting. So with that, I'd say that's the end of the presentation. We're open to any comments, any feedback that you've got, council and commission, about this process and any other, maybe key issues that you didn't hear me speak about yet today. Again, I'll reiterate, I think the mayor, the mayor's definitely right in that we want to, you know, try to keep, because we're not, we're not in a problem-solving mode tonight. We're kicking things off and we're, but if there are other key issues that you see that I did not list out, then I would, you know, I definitely think it would be good to hear about that.
Okay. Well done, Mr. Baird. I'll open the floor for questions or comments.
I'm glad we hit the key issues, then.
I knew Miss Joy would have something.
Well, I'm interested in your guided tour tomorrow, your field reconnaissance. Do you know where you're going?
Yes, city staff, we've given them some guidance about where we want to see. Tomorrow, we're really going to hit the sections of the city that is not the downtown. That being, our subconsultant is really, that's their role with the form-based section of this, that's their key area. So we're going to be looking heavily at some of the areas, both that are growing but also need redevelopment. So we have a set route, if you will, that, and those are really the two kind of key areas we're looking at.
Other questions? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I just have a comment that I appreciate the layout as to how this process is going to go forward. I think it allows for everyone to be able to, especially once we have that link available, to know where to be.
Right.
And how to engage and things like that. So I appreciate that fact. It's even, it's simple enough that even I can follow.
Well, great, yeah. We, with this project, we really want to schedule things out pretty far in advance. As I said, we've got the next trip date down, and we're going to continue doing that. So when I come back for the second trip, we'll work with staff to identify, here's when the third trip's going to be, and we'll keep on that schedule.
So that second trip, early October, so will we necessarily, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission, trying to project what we're looking at? Are we looking at a proposal at that point, or are we still kind of in the due diligence, note-taking stage?
Well, it's a little in-between both. We're going to be looking at what is in black and white in the code. That's really the main thing for the code critique, and we're going to have some recommendations about what's black and white. Now, the stakeholder sessions are really designed to see how that's being implemented or how it's working. So there are going to be some things that come out of the stakeholder sessions that are not going to be in the code critique, that we're then going to add back into that. So what we want is for you guys to hear the code, what we're coming from, or what we've come up with from the code critique standpoint, and give us our feedback on that, and also for us to explain to you what we heard in stakeholder sessions, and for you to say, yes, that makes sense, that's what we hear. So that's where we basis, that trip is designed so that we can then take that, all that input, and then start writing, because we don't want to start writing before we've done the legwork, so to speak.
So we'll hear the critique, and we'll critique the critique.
You will critique the critique, yes. You will be critiquing the critique, that's a good way to put it.
And I assume we'll have some, that in advance, so we'd be prepared for the meeting.
Right, yeah. We would give you the, you know, what we like to do is summarize that in a PowerPoint for the critique, and that's what we would give to you guys so that you kind of have an idea of what's coming through.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay.
Other questions? Staff, anything you'd like to add? Okay. I guess, yeah, Mr., yeah, Ms.
Jessica.
And then Mr. Wilson.
I think we got most everybody on that sign-up sheet, but if you did not, we have two sign-up sheets on the table in the lobby. Um, that will turn into a contact list, so our planning department can send out periodic updates, notes, meeting notices, that kinda thing. So if people want that information sent directly to them, go sign up on that sheet outside. Um, also on the website that he mentioned, there is a link on the website, that if anybody has feedback, issues, things that they want looked at, click on that link and they can submit that feedback through the website as well.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Baird, I have one question.
Yeah.
Uh, one comment first. I'd like to say how much I appreciate, uh, you mentioning the comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, that was an endeavor here that took several months to.
Sure.
To compile and, and to formulate. At the same time, there's a lot of interested citizens here tonight that were, had a lot of really good input for the comprehensive plan, and I, I see some of them sitting here tonight. And to know that that, that those ideas and that, that document, uh, will be used in what you do is, uh, I applaud you for that. The other cities that you've worked with in the past, once this, this is finished, um, is this, uh, for instance, will this be like a document you can draw up on the city website on the computers, is it a Word document? Do you have proprietary software?
Yeah.
That you're using? Can you enlighten us on that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. Sure. We are writing this, sister company of Kendi Keys Collaborative is InCodePlus, and we're gonna be writing it actually in that software. What that software allows is it makes it much easier with graphics, to display graphics. Uh, it actually makes it a lot easier for amending purposes. Uh, so that's gonna be something that will be available to the public in a much easier, uh, format than what, I believe you have today. Uh, so we'll, we'll all be drafting in that, and that, that allows for accommodating, uh, from the Planning and Zoning Commission as well.
Okay, that's a great idea. Thank you.
And, um, I, just to follow up on your comment about the comp plan, yeah, that, this is ideal. Well, we like having clients where the comp plan has just been finished, because you, it's, it's fresh in people's minds, and they get to see how this process completely works. Instead of having a comp plan that was 10, 15 years old, because then it becomes, well, is it really relevant? I mean, you've just completed this, so it's obviously relevant. The other thing about the comp plan is sometimes there will be language in it that is a, a little vague, and so we have, our job from the pub, when we have public input, is to take that vague language and determine, there are places in it that aren't vague, they're very specific. But when we get to a point where it is, that's where we need the public input as to, you know, what exactly does this mean to you? Because when we're writing the law, we, we, we've gotta flesh that out, so.
Thank you.
Thank that.
Mr. Wheatley?
One more quick question, just so, I'm sure as we go through this process, this schedule here is probably gonna be modified, maybe changed here and there.
Sure.
So, just so we all know, in the public, will this website be updated with this schedule, so?
Yes.
We can all go to this one website?
Yes, absolutely. That, the most recent addition of the schedule will be, will be on the website.
Okay.
When we make changes, it'll get shot to that.
Okay. And sign up on the sign-up sheet?
Yep, absolutely. I mean, yeah, I can't emphasize that enough, because that's the way where they're gonna be, you know, contacting you. For, obviously, they, they know who you are as the Planning and Zoning Commission, but for the general public.
Thanks.
So, thank you, Mr. Baird. A couple things. First of all, on behalf of the city council, I wanna thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for your work, to what you do all the time, and, um, the, this is, uh, this is, uh, uh, extra work for you guys, so we'll double your pay, but, 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 uh, no, really, we, we very much appreciate what you do, and I, I wanna make sure I say that. I, I assume we've talked about a communication plan. Kristin, have you talked with Ms. Nobles about how we're gonna push this out? I mean, I think, um, I think that's critical, that we let citizens know what's going on in, in all forms and fashion.
Absolutely. And the website, of course, is gonna have the most up-to-date information. As soon as this meeting is over, we're gonna post the presentation video of this meeting as well, and, as well as the, the email, uh, contact, the sign-up sheet. We will send out emails regularly with any updates or changes to this project, as well as, um, just social media that the city uses to get the word out to citizens as well.
I think our traditional media will help us with that also. At, at council, I really encourage you to, um, to work with staff to make sure we take these meetings to our neighborhoods, okay? Um, we've already committed to do that, but let's get them to our neighborhoods. Let's, let's get them in all parts of our community. I think that's where you get feedback and, and, um, I think the other thing is that it's so instructive to the people who'll be working on this, 'cause they'll, they'll be in the neighborhoods and hear from the people who are really the, truly the stakeholders. So I think that's very important.
Absolutely.
And then I want just, in, in closing, I wanna reiterate that the, um, what the consultant said and what Mr. Wilson said about Plan 2040, Lubbock 2040, and I see a number of the folks that were very involved in that, including our, our chairs here tonight. Um, you know, two of the, two of the top, I think, one and two, uh, two of the top five priorities were the work we're talking about tonight, the unified development code, and the impact fees and working on impact, impact fees. And so on Tuesday night this week, we honored, or we, we recognized the seven citizens who are going to be the citizens committee to help guide the work around impact fees. They had their first meeting at lunch yesterday. It's, we've got a really, really good group. And tonight, uh, we're, you know, kicking off this effort, or at least publicly keep kicking off the effort on the, on the UDC. So, it's our commitment that we'll stick with this. We've got a, an oversight committee that is, is gonna, is following, of citizens that are following along as, to sort of keep us posted and keep all of you posted. In December of this year, they'll make a presentation to us, sort of a, a one-year update as to what's going on. And, uh, we, we'll expect that P and Z will probably at some point in the near future maybe come to us and say, hey, you know, there's something in that 2040 plan that we think we may need to look at a little bit, maybe we need to modify something. It needs to be a living and breathing document. If it just gathers dust, it doesn't do any good. And so, I think that's where the seven of us are, and we, we look forward to keep, to keep working on it. Keep, you know, to keeping the work going, all right? Anything else before we close?
Just one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, who will be a part of the touring group?
I'm sorry, was your question, who will be a part of the tour?
Yes.
The plan is to have, um, David Baird, uh, Brian Mayberry, and Mark White, and then myself, Steve O'Neil, Director of Development Services, and Yvonne Gonzalez, our senior planner. But we're happy to invite anyone else from council or the commission that would like to come.
They may start early in the morning, so you may not, you know, you're not good at, you're not good at that.
Starting at eight o'clock.
You have enough picks to make for me.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Joy.
One of the issues that we've had recurring is notice. And I understand the schedule, and some of it is specific and some of it is not. So just keep in mind that notice is very important, adequate notice is very important. Uh, and the other part of, uh, that is, keep in mind that there are those who are not computer, um, people, uh, and there are other avenues to advertise some of these, whether it's, uh, appearing on a television show, Kristin, or it's getting the, the local paper to, to print something, and I'm sure Matt Dotter will take care of covering all of that. Uh, but remember, there are other methods of communication that don't involve using a computer, okay?
I'm glad you mentioned that, if you don't mind, Mayor, if I could say one point to that.
Please, please.
We have talked about, of course, reaching out to the neighborhood associations to get the word out to their communities, as well as churches and schools, you know, other avenues such as that.
All right, it's 6:15, and the special meeting of the Lubbock City Council is adjourned.
P and Z would be considered adjourned as well.
It's a great day, Lubbock, Texas. Thank you for being here.